The Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place with allegiance. This morning, invocation will be given by Commissioner Turner Sloes.
Thank you, Your Honor. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to You with bow heads and humble hearts. We thank You for this day. We ask that You continue to be with us, guide us, bless us with wisdom, discernment, understanding, and civility. Lord, help us to do the will that You have in serving Your people. In Your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which You stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I roll call, please? Ms. Blackshear.
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Ms. Njolso.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Fear Chow.
Aye.
Turner Sloes.
Aye.
And motion then to approve the minutes from the September 17th meeting.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
We probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the September 17th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, so this morning, I'd like to have, first of all, presentation from Ms. Sandy Goodoff. Give us an update on the Human Services Levy. And while you're coming there, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to be here today. It's been a while since I've been here, but this morning, I'm here representing the Montgomery County Human Services Levy.
Yes, ma'am.
Issue one is on the ballot this November. I don't think I need to tell all of you how important this levy is to our community. Issue one will generate $58 million. It is a renewal with no increase in taxes. This levy helps to support so many critical services that are just so valuable for some of our most vulnerable citizens. I have a summary that you should have in front of you, but just to highlight a few of those services. Elder services, working with area aging and other agencies to keep seniors in their homes as long as possible. Working with individuals' children with disabilities. Protecting our children through Children's Services. Mental health services, public health. I can go on and on. But these services, this levy serves over 100,000 residents in our community, not just here in Dayton, but communities throughout Montgomery County. So I'm here this morning to ask for your endorsement of the levy. As I said, it generates $58 million, but also, as you know, and many things you do, it leverages hundreds of thousands of state and federal dollars. And with so many, you know, federal programs and such being cut, these funds are even more critical to the citizens of our community. So that's just a brief summary of the levy. And again, I'm here to ask for your endorsement of the levy. Again, no new taxes. It's a renewal, $58 million, and over 100,000 people are served through these funds. So if anybody has any questions of me, I'd be glad to address them.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, just, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for your 30 years of service working with this community as far as the city board is concerned, being chair in that space. And it's no surprise that they pulled you out of retirement to support this very important issue as far as the city of Dayton is concerned.
Well, I'm pleased to work on this levy. It is, it's so important to our community. So every now and then, I do projects that are, I'm passionate about, but more importantly, are so critical to our community.
Yeah, this is a big one. So I'm sure my colleagues have maybe a question or thought or two. Commissioner Turner Sloes?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Goodoff, for being here this morning. Just one quick question. Could you just explain, just so the public and everyone is fully aware of the terms of this?
I'm sorry?
Could you please explain the terms of the renewal, if it is in fact approved, in terms of once, understanding that there is no increase in the tax, but the extension of the renewal?
If I understand your question, this is a renewal, no increases. The levy, Montgomery County, quite a while ago, combined all the various different levies into one Human Services Levy. And so there are two, and this one will go through 2028.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Feare.
Yeah, thank you for your leadership on this. Obviously, very critical money's needed for critical services for people all across the county, our most vulnerable citizens, from our youngest to our oldest. So as you know, I've already communicated to you about my support, and I look forward to join my colleagues as a commission to add our support to the Human Service Levy. Thank you. And anything you need, let us know.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yeah, I too support this. I'm the representative for this body on the Human Services Levy Council, and I understand firsthand the great work that happens through this process and the threat to all of that if this levy does not pass. It is a renewal. It's not an increased tax. People are overtaxed in this community, but I urge everyone to support this very important levy for children, for seniors, for homeless. So yeah, you have my full support, too.
Okay, Commissioner Jolso.
I agree with my colleagues, everything they've said, including thanking you for years of service, Sandy. We really do appreciate you coming back out and working on something as important as this. And I also want to state that, you know, you mentioned that this is a countywide levy. This takes care of folks all across the county, but it disproportionately helps our people, right? It helps our folks. So that's another reason for us to support it. Even if it wasn't the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do for the city. And these services, mental health services, children's services, senior services, these are things that our folks need. So I would encourage people to go out and make sure they vote for this. I think it's going to be issue one, if I remember correctly. So we really do need a yes vote. It's vital that we fund the county to provide these services to our folks here.
Thank you.
And of course, you know, decades ago, I served as a chair and also served as a representative from the city on the board. And so clearly, it's the right thing to do. And I join my colleagues in, again, giving you good support and endorsement as far as the process is concerned. So thank you so much for your presentation. All right? And I know it's a lot of hard work going through this process. Even though you're asking for a renewal, it's still hard work to make sure we get the message out. So we hope that we have people who are listening who understand just how important this is to the community and so many of those citizens that you talked about earlier. So again, thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. To additional presentations, Ms. Blackshear, have additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay, so I see I have a special guest here. So Ms. Jackson, who's Chief of Staff of the City Commission, please join your other guests, Q, if you'll come in from the Cure Violence Organization, the international organization that works to minimize violence as far as the city of Dayton is concerned, and also for those members across the world. Thank you so much for being here. And Ms. Hockenbrock. Yes, ma'am. Can't leave you out.
[laughing]
For the Greater Dayton Hospital Association, really, really appreciate you guys stepping up to work in this space. All right, you may begin.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
City Manager Loeston and also Clerk Blackshear. It is, I wouldn't lie and tell y'all, I'm excited to be here, but I am nervous. I am excited that we are here at this point of a long journey of putting together the peace campaign and all the components that comes with it. A lot of work has gone into it and definitely want to say thank you to the Mayor and the Commissioners and the City Manager for supporting, as well as the two great workers that are standing here, Sarah Hockenbrock and as well as Q from CVG. And then all the city staff that has had their hands on this. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I know our Mayor and Commissioners appreciate it as well. So my part of this presentation is going to be kind of brief, just taking you on a quick journey of where we've been since November of '24. We've had several facilitated sessions with over 80-plus people to attend, and these are those that are over nonprofits, religious organizations, community, and others out of, that have been participating. There were, out of the first one, over 111 different generated ideas, and we've moved the needle on each one of those. We've done a work session in January, February with you and talked about it. Q was here with us. And then we also kicked it off at the State of the City. In March, April, we continued working. The Cure Violence Global, we did, Q did an assessment, provided assessment for us, which included going and talking to the neighborhood presidents, doing a ride-along, talking to residents throughout the city, and gave us an assessment. We also, as you see the picture, had a youth conversation and was facilitated as well and with the Dayton Public Schools. So we do have youth input. In addition to that, we also gave a lot of information as well as pens and paraphernalia with, to the NATO. And then also, we've done, Mayor has done conversations with the neighborhood presidents, including the neighborhood president's forum, just to keep our residents informed. Learn to Earn has been a great partner as well. They have been working on, reading, working with our youth in the community to let their voices be heard as well. And we should be, we will get the report out on that one on this coming Friday. Last but not least, July, August, and September, we did a bridge, and Commissioner asked me about the peace ambassadors. We did a bridge, and I say "we," let me be clear. The City Manager, Shelley Dikstein, and the Mayor, Shelley Dikstein came up with an idea. Mayor and the two of them worked it out, worked with Marlon Shackleford, who will be bringing the youth in the future because of mornings they can't get here, so we're working that out to make sure they come. They actually worked with over 20 youth out of Westwood Neighborhood and just finishing up. Their actual graduation is just coming up weekend, and so we're excited to be able to have more young people that has been trained in regards to mediation conflict, having more peaceful young people out on the street, which also, this is my personal dig, may be able to help some adults in our community as well for violence. Let's see. And then we also have the peace committees. So there are three committees that we have, and they have been really working diligently. We started out with the steering committee, and Commissioner Turner Sloes was a part of that at the table, and they actually came up with some ideas, and that's where we started out with the first session. And now we have three pillars that each of them are working really hard. In the audience today, we do have some co-chairs, and I'm just going to call names that I remember seeing. And so if you raise your hand so those that are in the audience can know that you're here, Nicole Smith from, oh, I see her, back there.
Cindy Back.
She's here. And then Will Smith, and I'm married. Will Smith is back there also, representing public schools. Am I missing anybody outside of?
Nicole. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nicole Miller.
Nicole Miller. I'm sorry, I didn't see you all the way. Nicole Miller from Miami Valley Urban League is also a co-chair of one of the committees, as well as Sarah Hockenbrock. So we have five co-chairs who have really been working and working with the committees, and I want to personally to say thank you very much. This is not only a City of Dayton's campaign. This is a community. This is for our city. So with that being said, I know we had questions. We are going to hopefully address your questions that you sent me. All of you gave me some questions. And if not, I will come back up and answer the rest of them, okay? With that being said, I would like to turn it over to Sarah Hockenbrock from GADAH, and then we'll have Q come up. Is that okay with everyone?
Okay, yes. Before you do that, just to mention just a couple of things. On the youth sessions, when we talk with the young people in DPS in particular, it was the elected body, the Superintendent Student Senate. So these are young people who have been elected by their peers to be a part of the process. And there's a lot of data in terms of what was communicated during those sessions. One of the things that was really intriguing, as I took part in the whole process with them, was to hear a young man who is the commander of the ROTC unit at one of the schools talk about the fact of a fight that had happened approximately two weeks prior to that. He said that had he been at school that day, because of his training, that there would not have been a fight, because he knew the individuals that were engaged in the fight, that he could have interacted and talked with them and kept them from engaging in a fight, which wound up being one of the bigger fights that they'd had in the school that year. It's that type of message, that type of goal, that type of vision that we see as we engage ourselves in this process, to have more and more of our young people who know how to use these skills to identify how to resolve and eliminate some of the violent situations that we have. So there's a lot more in terms of good things that happen in those processes. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to share with you that Judge Walter Rice is co-chair, alone with myself, and he could not be here this morning. He sends his apologies, but he is fully engaged and fully on board in terms of running this process. And of course, we all know, you know, Judge Rice has been very active in this community for decades in terms of making good things happen on issues that deal with people. All right? So presentations, come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you this morning and for the opportunity to join you in what I think will be a transformative effort to benefit our communities. As many of you know, the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association represents 29 hospitals and health systems across 11 counties. But when we think about one of the reasons why we're here is that as healthcare has continued to change and evolve, it has become very clear that to improve the health of our individuals and the health of our communities, we have to also work with our communities and our jurisdictions to address the social needs of our community members. And so in many instances, in healthcare, we refer to these items as a social determinants of health. We also use the term "social need." But this includes some of the social and community context in which people live and exist, as well as the safety of our neighborhoods, access and quality of healthcare in their jurisdictions, education, and then ongoing economic stability. And I think all of these elements are necessary for the safety and success of our neighborhoods and the City of Dayton. When we look at what we can actually manage and have control and influence within our hospitals, that's a fairly limited set in terms of healthcare, of access, and quality. But we can partner with communities and organizations across the region to address all of the other social factors. We have on our team Lisa Henderson, who's with me today. She's our Vice President of Health Initiatives, and she leads this entire portfolio for us for the Greater Dayton Area Hospital Association, which includes our ongoing community health needs assessment and improvement plan, work that happens with our hospitals and our public health departments on a three-year cycle to continuously engage the community, survey them based on their needs, and then build implementation plans and policies and activities to benefit the members of our communities. And we see this opportunity to participate in violence reduction as one step connected to that particular plan and program. You're going to get the refresher on the CVG model specifically from Q, but I'm going to talk to you a little about our work supporting the City of Dayton and supporting CVG and our hopefully soon-to-be selected community-based organization. And then we'll talk about what the ideal qualifications of that community-based organization will look like. But essentially, when GADAH steps in to support community-based initiatives, we step in to support as a convener and as a facilitator. We are by no means the expert in this particular scope of work, but what we do specialize in is bringing diverse partners and perspectives to a shared table and pulling out opportunities to work together and build common approaches, and then actually take the necessary steps to implement that work. And so in working with the peace campaign and the steering committee, I and Lisa and several of our team members will be actively engaged in that work, not just to understand and lend support, but then to also be a bridge and help make connections to other community-based organizations that need to be engaged in these efforts. When we think about the work that is ahead of us, we've spent the last couple of months working with our Violence Reduction Subcommittee to develop what we're calling our Request for Application, sometimes referred to as a Request for Proposal. But this is really a Request for Application, to apply to become that community-based organization and to be trained alongside the CVG team that will be assigned to us to learn their model of violence interruption. This is a very robust training process and schedule, and I think this is the component that makes it the most compelling, is that this is a successful implementation and model that we've seen work in other communities. And if we work alongside CVG and follow their guidance and instruction and do the work that we need to do to engage community partners, there is no reason we should not be able to be as successful here in Dayton as you've seen in Brooklyn and Baltimore and Philadelphia and communities across the globe. Depending on the nature of the community-based organization, we are prepared to provide some administrative and financial operations support. So depending on the size and scope of the organization, we have our finance and accounting team ready to provide assistance if the organization is going to need that support to help them oversee what will be a grant of city dollars flowing through GADAH to this organization. And we want to make sure that our role in that and the community-based organization's role in that hold ourselves to the highest standard of managing grant funds in the same way that we do for some of our other grant-funded programs that flow through the federal government and flow through the state government. And then ongoing work to train and support the CBO and their staff. As you'll learn from Q, this will have a very, very quick wind-up process for the CBO to hire the staff and train them so that we can deploy them into the community. They've got to be ready to do that work, and they may need some operational assistance to help them through those processes. And then as we get into the work, we're going to be working with the Violence Reduction Subcommittee, the members of City of Dayton who've been engaged in that process, as well as others from the peace campaign, to ensure that we're managing our contracts appropriately. And that includes the reporting element. I don't know exactly what the reports are going to look like yet, but we're going to start with the models that CVG will provide based on what we have set forth in our contract with the City of Dayton for some of the items that we're going to track. And so we know what the elements of it will look like, but in terms of the format, we'll figure that out along the way. So when we talk about this community-based organization, this is, this organization is going to be the heart of this model in terms of violence reduction. Because it is a model tied to Cure Violence Global, it's really important that whoever this organization is, is directly in line with understanding the public health approach to violence reduction and the evidence-based, science-based process that CVG has developed. Additionally, we're looking for that community-based organization that we can trust and that organizations and community members from this neighborhood will also see as a trusted partner. It wouldn't work for us as GADAH to go into a community and do that work. This has to be a community-based organization that's growing out of the neighborhoods that residents know and understand and can trust. Additionally, we want this organization to have some history connected to providing this level of violence prevention or related work. And that can be navigation to social services, conflict resolution, mediation services, in some instances cognitive behavioral therapy, and trauma-informed care may also apply. And so when you start thinking more broadly about who that could be, I think you'll have a couple of organizations that come to mind that do that work and could potentially be a very good fit for this application. And then because there is going to be a level of reporting required, we also want this to be an organization that has some level of experience in managing that process with grants and applications and reporting back to either funders or stakeholders. And so then as we get into the next steps, once the community-based organization is selected, that's when we get to dig into the implementation, the training, and developing the reporting processes with Cure Violence Global. I would anticipate that the first six months, once this organization is selected, is going to be knee-deep in the implementation work, to hire the staff, to serve as the outreach workers, the program manager, the violence interrupters, and then go through the series of trainings that Cure Violence Global provides. Some of these are technical skill trainings, like working in the database and understanding exactly what they are going to be documenting and how to document those participant interactions correctly. But some of it is also going to be training for management of those organizations and other community partners to understand this model of interruption and outreach. So taking that 101 presentation and level of education that we received from Q and CVG, but going deeper so that other community partners are really ready to embrace this work, the specific training for violence interruption and reduction, and then the outreach worker training. The beauty of all of this is that this is not simply something that is one and done. As we go through this process and experience an entire year of working with CVG, we then essentially will be building the skill set so that we can train others in this work and replicate this model in other communities and neighborhoods. That is the beauty of starting small and doing this in a pilot session, is that we get to learn and test and then grow to hopefully have an even greater impact. From a reporting perspective, we have already identified several elements within the proposed agreement in conjunction with CVG and the Violence Reduction Subcommittee. These are going to be some of the items that we're going to be asking the CBO to track. Much of this they'll be able to track in the documentation and database system that they'll be trained on with CVG. But as we get into understanding specifically what residents and neighborhood, what the neighborhood really needs, there may be other data points that we uncover and need to track along the way. And I think that's something that we are really equipped to understand from an association perspective because of our ongoing work with health initiatives. And so if approved today, we would be ready to post the application on our website and then also cross-post that on the City of Dayton's peace campaign website. On Monday, we would be calling together all of our steering committee stakeholders to share with them the good news that we are moving forward to implementation and really ask those community partners to join us in disseminating that application. We want, in addition to doing media interviews and those kinds of things, some of this has to be done by word of mouth, by trusted partners in the community who know exactly who to go talk to to say, "You should really consider applying for this opportunity. Your organization is perfectly positioned." And then on October 2nd at 11:00 a.m., we're going to host a virtual Q and A section, session. We're going to do it virtually because that's going to allow us to hit the record button and then post the recording on our website so that it's there for anyone who has questions and might be interested in applying. and might be interested in applying. And then the ideal timeline is that we would close the application on October 30th at 11:59 p.m. Lisa will be receiving all of those applications via email. And then we hope that by December 1st, we would be able to select and identify our community-based organization and really go through that contracting process then behind the scenes so that they can be ready to go to start the training. This is very, very close to what we had identified as what our original timeline could be, and I am so pleased that we have had the level of engagement and support from our Subcommittee as we've gone through the planning process, outlined the timelines, looked at the RFP drafts, and then really considered what do we need to modify or what do we need to replicate as we look at the community-based organization opportunity? And so with that, I will turn it over to Q.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Mayor Mims and Commissioners and the City of Dayton. Excuse me. It's always a joy to come up here. I'm based out of Louisville, Kentucky, so it's never a far drive up, and I always look forward to coming up and seeing you all. Like has been stated before, my name is Keyonis Corneal. I am the Strategic Partnerships Director at Cure Violence Global, and we've been working on this for some time now, and I'm happy to say that I've been with you all, you know, since the start of this initiative. So Sarah did a great job and Ms. Vee did a great job of setting the foundation and setting the stone for me. I just want to give you all a little bit, if you haven't been a part of some of our earlier conversations around what Cure Violence Global is, what is community violence intervention, I want to just quickly give you all a wraparound around our model. So Cure Violence Global, formerly started a ceasefire in the 90s, is a non-governmental organization that works with different jurisdictions around the world and around the U.S. to provide training and technical assistance for community-based organizations and jurisdictions looking to do something about community violence. Now, community violence looks a lot different depending on what jurisdiction and what part of the world you're in. In America, one of the biggest issues that we're having in community violence is obviously gun violence, other things like that, interpersonal conflicts between individuals. And so our model has been found successful in various communities since the early 90s, transitioning now to what we believe is a strong foundation for jurisdictions to be able to take our model, have the administrative and operational support, and then add into it what makes Dayton special to be able to hopefully see decline in some of these conflicts in your communities, okay? So what makes Cure Violence Global special is that we are an evidence-based model, but we're community-driven, okay? And what I mean by that is our model is based off of epidemic disease control methods. So the same practices that you would take to address COVID-19 or tuberculosis or cholera, right? The same basic principles, three basic principles, we're going to take those and we're going to apply that to the, to the, to violence, right? Looking at violence as a public health issue and a public health disease, okay? So you have the public health approach, but then we leverage the lived experience of those in the community to actually build relationships with those who may be at the highest risk of being involved in violence, whether they're a perpetrator potentially or a victim, right? So when you talk about the situation that Mayor Mims brought up earlier in terms of a fight at the school and how one individual said that if they had been there, they feel that they would have possibly prevented that incident, it's because that person felt like they had the skill set to be able to intervene. What we're doing is empowering those individuals in communities with a skill set, with a formal skill set to address conflicts. All right? So specifically for Dayton, what we've proposed in our, in our, in our agreement with the city and GADHA is that we're going to provide you all with technical assistance and training specifically that's been laid out already, and we're going to cover again on the next slide. But the bulk of our service will be the technical assistance and the training, right? We love our partners, but we're not specifically here in Dayton dealing with the issues, seeing it, right? So we need you all to kind of put the special sprinkle of what makes Dayton special on the model. We always say at CVG, "Don't take anything away. Add to it what makes it special for you." But the foundation of it will be the technical assistance that we're going to provide to you. What that looks like is, is every phase. So you have the pre-implementation phase, which is where we would be in if it's got approved today, and starting to really draw out the RFP process and kind of help with that, which we've had conversations with this whole time. So just so that everybody's aware, I have been, CVG has been, I've been representing CVG to provide technical assistance up until this point in terms of the RFP and just how we should frame this for the community. And so a lot of that will continue until stakeholder awareness training. So we'll do some CVG one-on-one presentations for key stakeholders. We'll get into the hiring and recruitment of the staff once the CBO is actually selected following the timeline that Sarah provided. A lot of that, we provide not only technical assistance by way of virtual calls, it's the way of most of that occurs, is through a virtual meeting, usually weekly or bi-weekly, but also we give you all physical support as well. And what that means is we provide you all with a host of documents to be able to use throughout each one of these processes, right? So when you're talking about hiring individuals that may be interested as a program manager to oversee the program, or a violence interrupter to actually work with high-risk individuals, we provide things like scorecards, interview questions, just a, just a job descriptions, a load of administrative tools to help guide Dayton throughout that process. Now, and again, you all can add to that as you may, if there's things that you all want to put in there to gather some additional information throughout the process, that is totally fine, okay? So in addition to technical assistance, the other bulk of it is the actual training, right? And so like Sarah stated, it's a robust training package, and it's this way for a reason, based off evaluations that's been done, not only by CVG but by third-party evaluators across the country as well. There's, there's key areas that successful sites have training in, specific training in. One of them is obviously violence interruption and reduction training, which is basically conflict resolution, conducting mediations, those kind of things, right? That is a four to five-day training for all program staff and anybody that's going to be directly working with the program or providing oversight to the program, okay? Another area is the program management training, okay? There is a set of skills that we found and that researchers found that need to be possessed by individuals if they're going to serve as a program manager or supervisor compared to that of a violence interrupter or outreach worker, right? To give an example of that, a program manager is going to have a variety of duties, right? They should be able to go into the community along with violence interrupters and outreach workers, but they'll probably be in settings just like this, presenting and speaking on the results and kind of the standing of the program itself. So again, each position has their own set of skills, and we're going to provide the training so that each position is successful in their work. Speaking on that, going to the outreach case, outreach worker case management training, that's another four to five-day, 40-hour training specifically on case management, providing support. When you're talking about addressing the things that are causing individuals to continue being in this cycle of violence, right? So you're talking about supportive services such as, you know, I think we talked about social determinants of health earlier, right? So addressing, does this individual have access to quality food, quality healthcare, education? Is it even safe for this individual to go to work, right? Just taking a deep dive and providing sincere case management to that individual, to high-risk individuals. Lastly, is the CVG database training, that's a one- to two-day training, really deals with a lot of reporting. And I think, you know, I'm sure that'll come up in a question later, but we're talking about tracking our daily, our daily activities as outreach worker or violence interrupter, whatever my role is within the program, right? So heavy reporting there. I just want to say the database will generate reports for the admin user of the account so that person will have the ability to generate a two-week report, a month report, a three-month report, so that they're able to consistently track the progress of the team and efforts within the CVI lane. But then as a city, you all can use some of that to combine it with data from other agencies that are under the Peace Campaign as well, to see how you all are tracking as you all are moving forward in your violence interruption and reduction plans. All right? And here's just some evidence that I like to throw in there to show that our model does work, going all the way back to, again, the early 90s, starting out in Chicago in Gresham Park, where we saw a 67% reduction in the first year, to as recently as this year, you're seeing studies, whether it's Baltimore, whether it's Philly, Louisville, where I'm based out of, is seeing a 30% reduction right now in homicides. So CVI works, our model works. We're happy to be here to help you all in your violence reduction and interruption initiatives. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'm sure we have some questions. Do we have any members of the community on the senior management recommendations who need to make a comment or question that signed up?
None.
None? Okay, good. Commissioners, questions? Start with Commissioner Turner-Sloss.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here this morning. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, and thank you for acknowledging that you did receive the questions. I appreciate that, and thank you for the additional legwork that you did on this, this presentation, as well as all of the work over the last, well, has it been six months now? It's been some time, yes. So I really do appreciate it. Just a couple of questions, just starting with Ms. Hackenbrock in your presentation. Thank you again. And from my understanding, you stated that the Learn to Earn, or that may have been, Ms. Jackson, that the Learn to Earn report will be provided this Friday, is that right? And that is from the agreement that was set in stone or that was approved probably about two years ago for some additional assessment work in that is to use that data? How will that information be used in conjunction with the CVG model?
So because it is working with youth, it will also be integrated in the system with the CVG model. We will also take it out and use it and for stunning up the youth commission. So there are different ways that we're going to be using it, but definitely Erica Fields with Learn to Earn, they will definitely be doing the presentation, giving us the report, and then you receive it, and then we will also share it with the Steering Committee, all the committees, because we do have a youth component in regards to the three pillars with youth in it, and we'll use that that way.
Okay, thank you. And they'll be an immediate partner or intricate partner, a part of the process from the inception to the rollout, if you will, of the, of the agreement in December, once it is in fact placed. They will continue, yes?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're part of the committees and all.
Okay, thank you. And then, so the, I know that it was mentioned of the 20 youth in Westwood. I had an opportunity to, to visit some of the sessions, and a very exciting program and initiative. I will say that the, the young men that were a part, and I believe there were some young ladies as well.
No, just young men.
Just young men, thank you. They were very excited about the, the program. So just out of curiosity, have we seen that agreement? Or what does that, what does that look like with the, I know you said that it is with the county and the city, is that right? Is there a formalized agreement that we have in place, or is just?
You ready?
I'm ready, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So what we did was, we, the city partnered with the Peace Ambassadors, which is Marlon Shackleford.
Right.
And we paid for the youth.
Okay.
And that came out of the wonderful budget of planning the neighborhood development.
Okay.
Who worked very, very hard, Jonathan Johnson and Mike Squire, to make this get done. And we did, it was 420. Montgomery County came along, and we appreciate, I wrote it down because I didn't say that at the beginning.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that we acknowledge that Montgomery County was also a partner. They actually paid for the adults, so the, those that did the training and, so we weren't really in a binding contract together, it's they agreed to do a certain portion and we did another portion.
Okay. And now would this be an extension of the program? Once the CBO is identified, will we continue on with this model with the youth? Or is this, was this just a pilot as a immediate need until we can get to the next steps?
Yes, ma'am. It was a pilot.
Is there potential to, or is that still up in the air? Is it potential to continue on that path, to grow that program?
So yes, ma'am. What we'd like to do is get the report out. We just had a meeting, I think Monday, with Mr. Shackleford. He's going to get us a report out of how the outcomes were and all the good stuff, and then we will bring that back to the body to say this worked, or there were some, we need to make some tweaks. It also included mediation. They went and did some things as well. So we will look for some reports back and see how well it did.
Okay. And then will they also, once we look at the reports, I'm just trying to marry the two, that's where I'm going with this. So once the CBO is in place, or, and then once CVG comes in, the Cure Violence Global Initiative, once they come in and they are, they have the training in place, will those individuals who participated in this pilot program, will they have an opportunity to receive that same level of training? Being that they were a part of the pilot program, will we extend that, that opportunity to those individuals?
So these are kids, right?
Right.
Are you looking at Q to answer?
I'm looking at you.
Oh, oh.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at you. You look like you was looking behind, I apologize. So no, but those are kids, and what we will be definitely doing is using them in the future, because I know Marlon Shackleford, and he'll be here, he will be using them during the school time as well and training the trainer, right? Training kids and passing that on.
Okay.
For the CVG, they're adults, full-time and part-time positions that they'll actually be doing.
Okay, that was one of my questions. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. And then I know there was may, may mention of, and I believe it was Ms. Hackenbrock, you may mention of that there could potentially be the CBO that will be identified from the targeted areas, is that right? So the question that I have, we have, I think it's maybe three or four targeted areas. And if we are unable to identify a particular CBO that is familiar with the neighborhood, familiar with the community members, the residents, whatever have you, like, is there an opportunity for us to go outside of that? Because like, I immediately think of Westwood. We know that is a targeted area, area of concern. Or even Main Street, the Santa Clara, Five Oaks area. We don't necessarily have a identified nonprofit who has the scale, the, the technical expertise, whatever have you. So who in fact will we lean to for that level of, of support? I'm just going with that question, being that you made the statement that we want to identify CBOs who are familiar with the neighborhoods, the people, whatever have you.
Yes. And so it's not necessarily that the CBO needs to be specifically based, that their home office needs to be in the Riverdale neighborhood, but they need to be familiar with the neighborhood. It'd be ideal if they're already engaged in the neighborhood and providing services, and that way there's some level of familiarity and trust from the community with that organization as they show up and they engage in different community meetings, as they host programmatic meetings or opportunities to engage and invite people to have conversation. And so the goal is that with the approximately 30 days that we'll have the application open, we will have enough communication going out through multiple channels so that that application opportunity reaches a wide array of organizations. But at the same time, if we see that, you know, by October 30th, if we don't have any applications, then I think that's a conversation that we need to have in terms of extending the deadline.
Okay.
And then pulling together organizations that we believe would meet those criteria and ask them to consider applying.
Okay. All right. And then the, I know you mentioned Ms. Henderson, thank you, Ms. Henderson, for being here and the work that she does as it relates to the, the needs assessment. Where can we find that needs assessment? Is that on the site? Okay. And is every three years?
The Community Health Needs Assessment is on our GADHA website, gadaha.org. And once we go through the process today, the application and all of the details for the, our, the application will be posted on our website as well.
Okay, thank you. Trying to make sure I go through my questions, excuse me.
Take your time.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that, I really do. So Monday, September the 29th, the information will be disseminated to many of the stakeholders. Do we have an idea of when that information will be released? Is there a particular place and time that has been identified?
So thanks, Commissioner. It is actually, will be on Teams.
Okay.
On Monday at 9 o'clock, I think that's the correct time. On Monday at nine o'clock. I think that's the correct time. And then, we will actually, we've invited all of the stakeholders to be a part of that.
Okay. So, I understand, right? Like, we want to make sure that all members of this legislative body have that information. So, what are the steps to make sure that we're all invited and that we have the same information, so we can be on the same page moving forward? And I know we have to be very mindful of certain things, but I would just ask that if there's a way and a means, and I may mention this before, to invite two of us at the various Steering Committee meetings that we have in place, so that we all can have a piece, a part of this initiative. And being though, this is something that we're working collectively together, and I will say this, I'm happy to see this. This has been in the makings for a long time. I know that Commissioner Fairchild had made mention of this in '21, '22, early on. So, to see that is now starting to develop. And we cannot negate SERVE, right? The work of SERVE, the work of many of our other previous partners from Omega CDC, the Peace Ambassadors, or the Street Soldiers. Like, there is long history, and the work has been done. So, to see that we're making a long-term, if you will, commitment to this work, I think it is, it is, it goes without saying that I'm happy to see that it is now coming into fruition. And I hope that this is something that we can continue from not just one year, but for the next 20 years. And I know the chief has made mention to this on a number of occasions. So, just want to make that point. No...
So, Commissioner, can I add you?
Yes.
And Mayor will be invited?
Yes.
But remembering that I can't have more than two?
Yeah.
So, if you want to step out, or Mayor want to step out and allow the others to participate, that's fine. You all can discuss that and let me know who will be participating when. And then, I'll make sure you get the invite, but I can't have more than two.
Right, absolutely. But moving forward, we need to find some ways and means to make sure that everybody has the information, not just the memo, but that we are engaging with the various committees, whatever have you, through the process. So, we can be very creative about that. I know how we do it, work session, whatever. I just want to make sure that we all have the information, because we're all a part of this. This is something that is a priority for all of us, and we want to make sure that we are intimately involved in that process. So, thank you, Ms. Jackson. And then, the Q and A session that is slated for October the 2nd, would that also include technical assistance?
We're going to walk through the nuts and bolts of the application and some of the questions that we anticipate. And then, we're going to open it up to the individuals who are joining us so that they can pose their questions. We'll answer them in real time as best they can. And then, we'll also gather those questions, and that we can summarize them and put them on our website in that same section for the Peace Campaign Violence Reduction Initiative, and that there will be that summary of commonly asked questions.
Okay.
So that the same level of technical assistance is available to everyone.
Right.
Whether or not they're able to participate in that virtual session.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Jackson, you did answer my question in terms of, like, the part-time and full-time, because that was one of my questions. I saw that there was a difference in salaries. And so, I wanted to make, just get clarification as to why we're seeing that difference in salary.
And I speak, because they're part-time and full-time employed, well, that's what that is.
Okay. And then, what's the governing body structure? Like, we know that GADHA is in fact the fiduciary agent, right? They're acting as so. We know that CVG is the TA. They're coming in, providing that level of expertise. Who is, and I know it's mentioned in the agreement, city leadership. Who is designated as city leadership, and what does that structure look like in terms of governing the model itself?
So, for city, so for city, it would be myself and the five of you sitting up there.
Okay. All right. Okay. And then, the other part of that question is, I know you mentioned the report will come out. Want to get an understanding too. And I know we're still in the infancy stage of the performance metrics. Like, what are we doing and how are we going to, to measure the performance overall? So, I look forward to seeing that more in detail. And how was that, and this more so, the question is for Mr. Kiel. How were, how was the outlines of services? How were they identified? Because I can see some cuts in there, about $35,000 we can reduce from, so...
When you, when you say services, are you pertaining to the services that the CBO will be offering to participants or families, or the services that CVG is providing to...
Exactly.
To Dayton?
The latter, yes.
Which ones?
The latter.
Okay. Oh, so, okay, now restate your question, please. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. So, the question that I have is, there are a number of outline of services. So, my initial question is, who determined those outlining services? That's the first question.
Okay.
And then, the other is, I see that there is some similarities. So, my question is, is there, is it à la carte? Could we go in and say, ah, we don't need that. We need this, this, this. We have some other partners, organizations who can provide X, Y, and Z. Can we just do the following? Who determined the list of services? That's my initial question.
Yes. Thank you for your question. And thank you for reexplaining it to me. So, no proposed agreement is, is the same for every jurisdiction. There's a reason why we go through the readiness assessment process, which I conducted a while back, as you may have remembered, to kind of really get a feel for what might be best suited for Dayton in terms of CVI work. The core trainings up there that you see are the, are the core trainings. There is nothing in our agreement that is, that is supplemental. We had several conversations with Ms. Jackson, with GADHA, with OMB, the Office of OMB, on what may be best for Dayton right now. We went through, what does, you know, long-term look like in terms of partnership, what the short-term look like? And after those conversations, it was ultimately requested that we're looking for agreement for, for one year, and with, with the core training. So, Q, what are the things that you've seen based off the research that is needed for us to be able to have an impact? And that's the core trainings that you see there. So, that's why it's broken up like that. You have your management training, which I kind of discussed earlier. You have your foundation training for all people, which is your Violence Interruption Reduction Training. And then, for your case managers, you have your case management specific training. So, that is just the three trainings that goes towards the positions that are listed within the model. And then, I think we did include a booster training, just to address, for one, down the road, turnover, you have to always have to account for that. But then, two, just to have a refresher in there, which as you see, probably, if you've seen the proposed agreement, then, again, it's just a booster training. So, it's typically a one- or two-day training compared to the four- or five-day trainings of the core trainings that we talked about earlier. So, to answer your question, it was a collection between the city, OMB, GADHA, and then, once I got the information, I drafted up a scope, sent that, and then, we got here.
Okay. I guess, because what, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was looking at, and I believe I have these, these units correct, the Program Manager Training, Interruption and Outreach, and then, the Violence Interruption Reduction Training. What are, what is the difference between those two? Like, one is what, management? The other is more so on the, the working level?
Yeah. So, the Violence Interruption Reduction Training is your foundation trainer for all members of the program, no matter what position that you might hold. The Program Management Training is specifically for supervisory and program, program and management skillset, and the development of that skillset.
And each of these are just, how many bodies does this cover?
Typically, if it's not listening to scope, typically, we say no more than 25. So, typically, you're looking between, it can cover up to 25.
So, okay. So, it cover up to 25 folks, but we only have a budget allotted for, for the staff. So, meaning that other community partners can participate in this training? Is that what I'm gathering?
Uh, I would say, what our typical recommendation is, I mean, it's not that they can't, but our typical recommendation is, is that the training be reserved for those who are obviously going to be hired to do the work, and then, those who are going to be directly working this in terms of oversight. So, for example, if there was a coordinator or somebody that was overseeing it from GADHA a portion of their time, we would recommend that that individual be in that training, right? If you have somebody from the city that wants to say, hey, I need to be on every step of this, this project, then we would recommend that if they're going to be involved to this capacity in terms of oversight, then we would send them through that training. In terms of sending a community member, I, again, we're not saying you can't, but when you're talking about, then you all have to decide what community member gets to, gets to go, because it's, in our current agreement, it's only, it's only one deliverable for each one of those core trainings. So, you have to kind of think about, you know, what's the, what, why you would send somebody. I know why you would. We just had a partner that called and asked if they can send their Neighborhood Watch team to do a Violence Interruption Training for 40 hours, and I just recommended it. Unless they're going to be paid to do this work and held to that standard, I think there's better use of that resource for individuals that are actually going to be doing that work. Is, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, because you all are, you all are paying for it. And then, what are those members going to be expected to do with that, with that information? So, again, we're not saying that, that you can't.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's really up to the governing body.
Okay, okay. And the governing body, again, is the, the...
Us.
All of us, and, okay. Because that will be my, my, my suggestion. If, if we're paying $35,000 for training, I would hope that that will be opened up to other various community members and not just the, the program manager for one, for one person.
Well, it would be, it would be anybody with supervisory responsibility. So, you're talking about representation from the city, representation from GADHA, the program manager, the supervisor. So, there's, there's multiple people. It's, yeah, it's multiple people that should be, at least our recommendation, it shouldn't be just a single program manager. It should be anybody who's going to be having oversight of the program.
Anybody that will have oversight of the program. But the only persons or individuals, from my understanding, that have oversight of the program will be those of the CBO, right?
Mm-hmm.
And GADHA, who will act as the fiduciary agent.
Yes, ma'am.
So, am I hearing that it's an opportunity for our mediation center to be involved? Am I hearing that our Recreation and Youth Services could be involved in this training, or our Planning Community Development, i.e. Community Engagement Staff can be involved in this training? I, I just need to see, like, what, what is this $35,000 going to get us? I want, I hope that it would be extended to other members, not just with the organization, but within the, the community. If we're saying that this is a global Cure Violence Initiative, and that we want to train up the community so that in, in turn, like, we can recruit and retain, right? So, we, once you get out from the year of TA that you are providing us, we have some long-term sustainability so that we can keep this model in place. So, if we're paying whatever have you upfront, we know that we're getting the ultimate bang for our buck. So, that will be my only suggestion, is that we are extending these trainings to other members within the organization. Perhaps it is our Peace Ambassadors, the adults that are currently being paid with the, who are leading the charge with the 20 youth in Westwood. Maybe they're going through this training in addition. So, I don't know if that's a matter of us adding an addendum or an amendment to this agreement, but I think we need to extend that, especially for the dollars that we're, we're paying. Like, if you look at the CBO expenses, like, we're not even scratching the surface, if you will, with the work that needs to be done in terms of the actual program itself, with the $252,000 that have been identified.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I would say too, though, our program management, like, training, as you've seen broken out, is a very robust four- to five-day training.
Yes.
To where we cover what we call, I'm getting into the training now, but what we call our four pillars of management. And it's been identified as one of the most successful management trainings. We get called to provide at all time to, as groups as small as one or two sometimes, and sometimes as groups as, as many as 10 to 15, right? And so, you know, so, we're, we're willing to, we're willing to, you know, work with the city and GADHA to figure out, you know, the best way to that. My recommendation is always, it's, it's never issue providing people with education, providing people with training.
Exactly.
That's never an issue at all. What we try to help is, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, you're fine. We just try to help our partners. We understand that we're working with limited resources. So, we just recommend our partners, hey, if this person's going to be a help accomplice, if they're going to be directly involved, then it makes total sense versus sending somebody who may appreciate a day or two, but this is a four- to five-day training. So, you just have to make sure that person is, you know, ready to spend that four to five days and be immersed in that and be, you know, be willing to play a key role throughout, throughout all of this. But that, that's a great question.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for being receptive.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I don't, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but I can see that this could be potentially an opportunity for DPD, Ms. Lofton. You know, there, there may be some other members within the organization, as well as outside, that can participate in this training. So, I don't know, and perhaps that is a question for our law department, or how are we going to note that this will in fact be included in the, in the agreement itself, just so that there won't be any ambiguity in, oh, yeah, we said, oh, no, that's fine. But we don't have anything in black and white to solidify what we have discussed this, this morning.
As a practice and a course of action that we always take, anytime we amend a current agreement and we add money or expand scope significantly, that is brought back before this commission.
Thank you.
Right. So, I got that piece, but how are we going to note that in this agreement today? So, what do we need to do?
It's in the amendment. It's already in the agreement that if there are changes, that there will be amendments. They have to be brought back. They're not ratified until that's done by the commission. All of our contracts and agreements allow for us to amend the agreement that is adopted.
Right. I'm following you, but I want to make sure that that is noted in here today so that we can approve the agreement. So, am I missing something? I'm just trying to make sure that that is noted in here. Like, we are set to approve the, this agreement in the, that's not clearly identified in the body of Exhibit B for the training. So, I want to make sure that that is noted, that those trainings will be extended to those who are identified from the, the governing body with, in support and in partnership with GADHA and CVG. Because I don't want to hold up the contract, but I also want to make sure that that's, that's noted.
Yeah. And I think honestly, and I understand exactly what you're saying right now, because there's the vote that, you know, obviously, at the conclusion of this, I, I do think that, I would hope that our language did allow for that in the general purpose of it. And I, I think it states in there, you all, you have had full discretion. All right? We're real provide recommendations. So, I, I think you can look at us that way, as you all have the discretion. We can always go back as we're going through the onboarding and pre-implementation process to kind of figure out who you all want specifically in there and kind of go back and forth. Because I, to be fair to those who haven't spoken yet, there may be additional thoughts on who should we include, who should we include. I know you brought up law enforcement, you know, so that we would have to engage them and kind of see what that looks like. So...
Okay.
But I, I do know the way it's written, it is meant for our partners to have the discretion in terms of who they're going to, who they're going to send to their trainings.
And you're right. And thank you, because it does say, it says, four hours per day to cohorts of 5, 20 participants. So, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
That's all the questions I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor. Q, on the screen, you know, our, our ultimate goal is to reduce violence.
Yes, sir.
In these major findings, what are the categories where there are reduction homicides? Are there other categories that are measured that, where we see reductions?
Yes, sir. So, specific, these are actually listed. I know it's a little blurry, so excuse me. Some of these are killings, some of these are shootings, or violent incidents. Even the one in UK was actually reduction in group attacks, right? So, neither shootings are killings. But again, violence is different everywhere, right? So, they labeled it as group attacks. The majority here, make no mistake about it, the, the goal is to have a reduction in shootings and homicides. That is our end goal. Now, it is very hard to hold any agency or a single agency responsible for that number. I think most of us would agree on. There are so many different factors that go into that. So, while that is a great identifier of whether our model is working or not, that's what we want to see six months from now, a year from now, right? When we really get things rolling. There are other things that we can track to give us a better idea on how implementation is going. Give me one second. I don't want to misspeak. Okay. Got my notes on me. So, we talked about reporting in the CVG database. So, of the key performance indicators and some of the things that we track, just so you all know, these are the things... you all know, these are the things that are generically in our database. Again, we can customize this, we work with partners to add measurements, but the core things that are in there are public education materials that's being distributed, right? The number of active staff, so just making sure that the CBO is able to keep people in the door in terms of employment, key individuals met, right? And so that means key individuals, high-risk individuals, right? We track non-key individuals, ma'am. We track the number of mediations conducted in a timeframe, the unique days worked inside the catchment area, but also outside the catchment area, right? Catchment area is another word for target area. Why would we collect information of what's going on outside of the target area? It's because that we know that violence is transient. A lot of times in terms of community violence and interpersonal violence, you're looking at whether it's neighborhoods, organizations that will travel to a location, commit an offense, and then go back to where they reside, right? And so we're aware of that. So we say anything that affects the target area is the target area. So for example, if I have a participant who's involved in a group in my target area, but I know they're going outside the target area to do something, I will go outside the target area because my participant there, my work has taken me there, all right? And so that gives the justification where you all might see in reports, why do we spend four hours outside the target area if we're spending all this money inside the target area? Well, that's the justification why, right? So other things really quick are participant activities, community activities, and then the case notes for outreach workers, we're tracking the case notes. The CBG database, just so everybody knows, does not collect identifiable information. Participants are identified by a unique identifier, so all their information is safe and secure.
Will those big categories be included in the report? The number of shootings and the number of homicides, both within the target area and outside the target area?
Yeah, so in the CBG database report, we can input shooting responses, but we can't input, obviously, Dayton shooting information, right? And so now if the city or Godaha is doing a larger report, they can, they can take all of our data out, combine it with the city's data to paint the picture of here's where we're at right now with our investment or a violence in general. But it does collect shooting responses. So every shooting that the team responds to, they are to put that into the system, and then you all can kind of track, hey, you know, we had X amount of shootings in the target area, that number should match up with the responses from the team.
Yeah. Well, I would like it in the broader report, the number of shootings and the number of homicides, because, I mean, that's, that's the goal, is to reduce that, right?
Yes, sir.
And we can recognize there's multiple factors.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, this factor might be reducing it, but other factors are increasing it.
Yes, sir.
And if we're going to be responsible, we need to be able to monitor that and think about other tactics if this is only doing a portion, but there's other things that are causing it to rise or not reduce as quick as we'd like. So in the reporting, I'd like to see number of shootings and number of homicides.
Yes, sir. And like I say, I think the city, between the city and Godaha, once, you know, we can submit our data and then we can kind of pull something together for you to include that. It's definitely, obviously, the relevant number.
Right.
So you're, yeah, you're spot on.
And then in other communities, what's kind of the timeline when you start to see reductions occurring? Because, you know, your work's going to take a while before it actually gets some traction. So is it a six-month tail, a nine-month, a three-month? What kind of tail is that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Fairchild. So it's kind of hard for me to say, and I've been in public safety for 10 years, but it's kind of hard to say exactly when we will see reductions, right? What I can tell you is that this happens in phases. I think Sarah did a great job of breaking down kind of the pre-implementation phase and the RFP process. We typically don't recommend starting evaluating before 18 months, right? We say give yourself 18 to 24 months before you start evaluating. The reason why is it's going to take minimum six months to get to where the team is trained up, ready to go, and they're entering data in the system, right?
Yeah.
And some people might say that's really long, but considering the timeline, right? If we started today, considering the timeline, you have to have your, you know, your FAIR RFP process, which we've all seen the dates there, right? So if we're looking at awarding or, you know, starting December 1st in terms of the CBO, all right, that's obviously, a bulk of that is pre-implementation stuff. Then we have to go through the recruitment and selection phase with the CBO in terms of identifying credible messengers to work within a program, right? Many of us have hired people before, have been a part, or been hired before, we know how that process can go. So to ensure that we can get the best candidates for each specific role, right, it's going to take time, right? And so you're going to have several weeks of interviews, TA calls, in terms of reviewing scorecard ranks, similar to the RFP process. And so then we get through, you all just seen, three weeks of core training, right? So you have a month of training.
Sure.
All right, and so you put all that together, it's probably going to be around six months before that team is trained out, ready to go. And then from there, we can start saying, okay, they're entering data every day, we can start meeting on a, you know, monthly basis to kind of see, okay, how is this tracking, you know, per month? And then, you know, give them some time, the learning curve, right? Give them some time to get out there. Many people have been doing this work for a long time. There will be people that are new to this work, maybe, that are, that are, that are being brought on, right? And so we're trying to make sure that they're supported and give them that time for that learning curve in terms of all the support that they're going to need to be successful in any position. So, but again, I know I didn't give you a hard time, but, you know, our recommendation for evaluation does not come before 18 months.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, that's very helpful.
Thank you.
That, I mean, recognize the dynamic nature of the work.
Yeah.
So this is, a ballpark was what I was looking for, and that's, and you gave it to me, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't even add the most important part. We're trying to address behavior change, right?
Right.
That takes a while, so excuse me for leaving that out. That's the main goal, right? Building relationships, behavior change, you change the behavior of one individual, hopefully influential individual in a group, in a community, and then we can start working on a community. But it starts with that one-on-one, that outreach worker time with that, with that high-risk individual.
Yeah. I was curious, when I was looking at the deliverables, most of it looked like referrals, you know, for housing insecurity or food and work, education, all those pieces. It seems like that worker needs to do a little bit more in terms of that behavioral change, you know, and that persuasion. And so is there another skill in there that they're trained in terms of how to mediate with that person, how to encourage that's, I don't know if it shows up as deliverable or not, but?
Yeah, yes, sir. Great question, you're spot on. So the outreach case management training, we'll start with that, right? We'll start with talking about recruiting the highest risk. If you've ever been in this kind of work, then you understand, everybody who needs help doesn't always raise their hand to say they need help, right? So there's the recruitment aspect of it. And then the case management piece, right? The actual technical skills on what case management should look like.
Right.
But we do capture that in terms of recruitment, in terms of mediating conflicts, in terms of dealing with regression, right? Because that is also a common thing when you're dealing with high risk and how to navigate that in terms of relapse. There are so many nuances in there that they're, that they're giving support on in terms of dealing with the highest risk and then also supporting the family too. The referral thing is, we put it in there because the CBO may not be the person that has, that houses all the social services.
Yeah, of course.
All right, so we don't want to limit our scope, right? And I think most people understand that. But it is going to be, our recommendations for referrals are a little bit different. Typically, all right, you make a referral for someone, they go out, all right? In our process, we're with that individual the whole way through, right? So it's not sending them here or sending them there. It is like, no, I'm actually showing up with you here. Or, hey, we have an appointment today, or whatever the case may be, right? And so a lot of that time is actually time spent with the participant. Our recommendation is that they're seeing a participant at least four to six times a month. When I was in Louisville, Kentucky, the way I had it written up in our program was that they were spending at least two hours with each of their participants. And that was in-person, face-to-face. It wasn't FaceTime or Zoom calls. You had to physically spend two hours a week. Now, they can be broken up into an hour on Tuesday and an hour on Friday, whatever that looks like. But what it did was ensure that the outreach worker was put in eyes and spending time with the individual versus making phone calls or just typing in on a computer. We found it a lot better in terms of results when we were actually having our teams meet face-to-face with participants.
In my reading of violence interruption programs, there's this work that's important with the individuals. There's also kind of a neighborhood context kind of work to be done. For example, if there's a drug house identified, or there's an illegal boot joint, or there's a drug deal, known drug dealer, or there's a park where people congregate and you can put in some structural barriers to prevent some of that. Is that part of the broader model, or is that something that we would need to bring alongside of that?
Yeah, I think it's definitely something that the CVI, the lane of CVI, community violence intervention, can assist with. I do think it's necessary, me personally, I do think it's necessary to have other people at the table for that, right? So the other, what I mean by that is other city agencies that would assist with that in terms of that. So maybe the larger committee discussing, okay, this is what we're hearing, this is what we're seeing from the CVI team, how do we support them in addressing those things? But yeah, you're exactly right. So, you know, low-lighted areas or boarded-up homes and those, and those kind of things like do impact violence in the community and usually are fostering opportunities for violence, right? And so what we have found out that is that successful CVI implementation, specifically with our model, is that trust in governments and trust in even law enforcement goes up, all right, with the successful implementation of our model.
Sure.
And I'll be honest, I utilize Dayton as an example all the time. I mean, DPD has just been a great partner from day one. And you all, in terms of that kind of support, law enforcement support, is really a model. So I just want to give you all credit, it's really a model for the rest of the country. Because I work with several, you know, abroad jurisdictions, but over 20 here, and I've yet to seen the support from Leo here, the way, the way it's been exercised and voiced. So, but it definitely, it does help to bring in other agencies who are directly impacted or can directly assist with those things. But it does start with CVI in terms of getting that messenger now, getting the community to care about that kind of stuff. Yeah, we can definitely play a, play a role in it.
Great. Who has, I think outreach gets used twice, in two different ways, if I'm reading it right, in the proposal. One is the outreach that goes directly to the individuals, and then there's an outreach piece to other stakeholders, partners, key institutions in the neighborhood. Who's responsible for that work? Is it the CBO or is that Godaha?
Yeah, that would be the CBO. The CBO, and it will follow the program manager, right? The program manager's responsibility is to create those relationships and maintain those relationships in terms of identifying resources within the community, knowing who's who, right? That's their job, is knowing who's who and knowing the problem areas so that they can start to formulate a game plan similar to other agencies, right, to strategize their priority areas within the target area, relationship building. But yes, that should follow in the CBO with support from the steering committee.
What's our, did you call it capture area?
Catchment or?
Encasment, yeah. Where's our encasment area? Have we identified that?
So we provided our recommendations in the, in our assessment. You all ultimately have, I think, Main Street? I'm sorry, I didn't want to misspeak. But yeah, the Main Street corridor.
Okay, great. And did I, in the presentation, was there, did I see that we want to have a physical site in that encasment area?
Yes, sir. That is our recommendation, that there is a physical site within the catchment area. When you're talking about changing behavior norms, you have to build relationships. And so if your violence interrupters are driving 15, 20 miles across town and going to work for six, or eight hours, right, and then they're going back, they're not going to be able to respond the way they need to, they're not going to be able to sustain those relationships. So I think what stated earlier, it is our hope that the CBO is within that area, but even if they're not, we've done things like, they've rented out space within the area, right? So maybe they serve the area, but their home base is not in that area. If they were selected, they could, you know, rent a space within the area or office space for the team and furnish that for them to work out of. The most important thing, though, I know we talked about it earlier, the CBO may not be directly there, or at least their home base, even though their services should go to the target area, is that the people hired to do the work come from that area, right? And so that's the, that's the main important thing, that the people, whether program manager, violence interrupter supervisor, or outreach worker, that they have direct ties to that community.
The portion of the CBO budget, does that include amounts so that they can rent out that space?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure about the proposed budget. It's typically something that we send in as a sample budget, just, just to have it covered, but not in this, not in this, not in this budget, yeah.
So that'd be an additional expense for the CBO?
If they, if they needed to rent out space, yeah.
What's the relationship between the commission and the steering committee? Because we talked about governance, and I, at some point, it wasn't clear to me how that relationship works.
So Commissioner Mayor Meams and Commissioner Turner-Sloss has been a part of the steering committee. Commissioner Shaw was a part of it, and then Commissioner Turner-Sloss.
Okay.
So, no, I don't want to go any further. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. That's helpful, thank you. The big question then is particularly given that, you know, we're not going to start evaluating this for 18 months. This is a one-year contract. What does the funding look like in year two? I assume some of the money that we have in place now is startup costs. I'm just curious of what that amount looks for going forward so we can sustain this. Because the last thing we want to do is, if we do 12 months and then don't fund this thing again, we've just wasted a whole lot of your time and goodwill and money and everything. So what do we think that year two, year three kind of costs are going to be? And I'm curious about, you know, how the encasment area, you know, if we need to expand it broader, because we know what happens, you know? If we put effort into one area, it's going to move to another area. I mean, that's just behavior change, right? So.
So Commissioner, that is a great question. I'm glad you asked, and I am so excited to say it loudly. It's called fundraising. And that governing committee, which is the five, and Verletter, will get out and get some funds to continue this initiative. Yes, sir.
And will be roughly the same amount, a half a million dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
And you're saying we're going to look at doing that through philanthropic dollars as opposed to funding it out of the general fund?
Yes, sir. We will start there. And we will start, if you all approve it, right, we will start immediately because we don't want to wait and get to eight months and then trying to get some funding.
Q, is that the way funding works in other communities?
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner Fairchild. It's one of the ways, yes. I'll just be blunt, we recommend that this is an investment into your public safety ecosystem, right? And so the, the risk that you brought up in terms of investing and pulling services away, right, that's what we want to avoid. So many of the communities impacted by community violence are used to services being pulled in and pulled out. And sometimes we can do more harm by offering a service short-term and then pulling out. So I do, I thank you for bringing that up because that is something that we're aware of at CBG. Fundraising is definitely a part of it, obviously, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's the local funds or state funding, we are typically, there's not a lot of federal funding going out right now in terms of CVI, just to be, just to be clear. But there still are some, there still are some. So, yeah, we, a lot of times, because of our partnership and our network on a global scale, our partners usually get a heads up if there's a funding stream coming out, or if my email, if my inbox chirps and say, hey, this fund is being released in, you know, the northeast region or whatever the case may be, I will get on the phone and call our partner and say, hey, not sure if they're interested, but this fund is being released here. But yes, sir, it does typically start with, you know, some decision-making from whoever typically brought us in. A lot of the time it's local government or nonprofit organization, fundraising or general budgets typically the way to go.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner.
No. Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate my colleagues for getting into the weeds on this. It allows me the opportunity to not do that and kind of keep it at a higher level. But these are really good questions that needed to be answered, so I appreciate you for that, you both for that. I'm really excited about this opportunity. This has been work that we've been looking at, at least, learning about for many years now. And I did kind of step aside from the leadership part of this to allow Commissioner Turner-Sloss to ascend, and I think that was the right thing to do. But I plan on being fully engaged in this, and I think that we all, this is all very important to all of us. CBG's reputation is very strong. The results kind of speak for themselves, so I'm really excited to let you all run with this. It's a fluid kind of a process, right? you all run with this. It's a fluid kind of a process, right? The big takeaway is that it's a long-term process, which requires a long-term commitment. And we'll be able to do this fundraising, and when there's gaps, then we'll plug those gaps. But, I'm really excited about kind of letting this process go forward. I think we've identified appropriate leadership at this point, stakeholders, territories, catchment zones, and whatnot. And I'm just, again, really excited about the opportunity to really make a difference in lowering violence in our community. It's going to be important for us to reach out to community members, and other kind of organizations, county, of course, the state, and federal government, to help us with this. This very important attempt that we are doing to solve this very devastating problem of violence in our community. So, I'm ready to get started with this, and I hope that my colleagues will join me in supporting this. I think that they will. Like I said, it's very important for all of us. So, I'm kind of going to leave it there. I know that we will be able to reevaluate this. We'll have other work sessions, and get further and further into the weeds as we go forward. But, let's get started with this now, and really give it a full-throated resources and everything else to support it. So, thank you.
Good. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to sort of start off by saying that it's refreshing to see a scientific, methodical approach being taken to solve problems like this, when we're under assault from the federal government that's disregarding science right now. So, thank you all for staying to the course. This is a great approach. It's a natural evolution, as was mentioned a couple times, from our serve opportunities, even further back than that. So, it's been a 20-year journey to get where we are today, and this is a natural next step. So, I'm really thrilled to support it. And I want to thank specifically staff that has been chasing this down, for you all, city manager's side, particularly the mayor who's been working really hard on this, on a personal basis, and all of us have had hand in this. So, I want to thank everyone who's taken us so far in the journey. Commissioner, your point, I think, is very important to emphasize that this is a long journey. Both commissioners made that point, in that we need to make sure that we're planning now for that, and also preparing the public, so they know it's not going to happen overnight. You're not going to see a 40% decrease tomorrow. But, over time, and that's what I love about this commission, we do look longer term. We plan for a future horizon, not just tomorrow. So, I appreciate my colleagues' work, my colleagues' support, and all of your work on this. Thank you.
Good. A couple of things. Again, thank my colleagues for probably reducing some of the questions that I may have, but haven't been involved in this process since the very beginning. It's important to note the thank you given to our police department for the close, hard work with you guys as well. Also, their data helped us to identify the areas that were most in concern. And one of the reasons why, I do want to sort of clear up something, so there's not a confusion relative to the program that we're working with, in terms of the young youth advisors, is the aspect of training for them, to give them a bit of a head start, and to help address some issues during the summer, while they were off, that would at least cause some additional conversation about peace, as far as the city of Dayton is concerned. And then looking at some of the data that we have from our police department on a recent basis, while there was a report some weeks ago, about some FBI data from '23 to '24, there was not inclusion of the reduction of some of the crime elements that we had, and the data that we had to support the fact that from '24 to '25, there had been some significant reductions in terms of crime elements that we have as far as the city of Dayton is concerned. So, that, I just want to get that out the way first. But, the other aspect of the peace with the youth is somewhat separate. It will fall more so in that second catchment area that we talked about, in terms of how we deal with youth development. And so, that's a key component, as far as that. So, my thoughts with that, as we work with the county to put those things in place, was identify 20 young people who live in the Westwood area, which is another one of those difficult, challenging areas that the police had identified for us, is to have them be a part of training process to understand, first, their self-value, two, how to identify, resolve conflict, and then, three, to be some of the role models in those spaces. And we purposely chose young people who were between the ages of 14 to 16. So, we would have their services going a little bit longer than just looking at high school, young people who are about ready to graduate. Additionally, a part of their commitment also is to train some of the younger people to be engaged in that process, for those young people in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, because they are role models to allow those young people in the age group as well. And they seem to have more effect, at least immediately, than just some of the adults who are going in, asking them not to do some of the things that they're doing, that's contributing to some of the problems. So, I just wanted to sort of clear that piece up. And we did get support from the county in terms of making some of those kinds of things happen. But, again, that second area that I'm talking about, in terms of the youth engagement piece, youth development piece, is a very strong, strong area that we are working with the schools, and not just DPS, but all the schools in the area, in terms of making sure that we improve those skills with all those young people. And they will learn from a lot of the things that are being done under the Cure Violence Model, that you guys are having, working from those spaces as well. And then the other group, we start talking about getting the word out. That's our third group, in terms of the community engagement piece. And that's where a lot of our support will come from, in terms of getting the message out, so that we continue to get this message out throughout this entire city, about what's happening relative to the peace, and the benefits associated with peace. You hear us talking all the time about making Dayton the best place for someone to live, work, play, be educated, raise a family, and grow old. And in order to make those things become a strong reality, we have to increase the peace element that we have as far as our city is concerned. So, again, so those are the three, if you will, legs to that stool that we're talking about. And one of the things that I had to explain very clearly to the county, in terms of the money that they were giving us to support the staff that was working with the young people, is the fact that we are not having our young people engaging in the very dangerous work of working in the community with those hardcore individuals who are perpetrating a lot of the shootings, and sometimes the killings associated with that. But, again, so it's a multifaceted process that we're using to work with this. And so, we're adding to the model. The whole peace campaign is adding to the model in terms of Cure Violence, that you guys are having. So, Q, one question I also want you to clarify, I know you showed some data there, and for those who are watching at home, and also for some officers who are sitting up here, that print is a little small. But, if you just want to talk about some of the cities, like Philadelphia, New York, Chicago, and places that are doing this work, and have done this work for a number of years, and their benefit to their community by work, pressure of doing this work?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Mims, and all the other commissioners for your words of support and your questions. In terms of some of the other cities, so, again, I stated to you all that I work with several jurisdictions around our country right now. And it's so important that we say that, again, our model is the foundation. We're going to give you all the tools, in terms of the team, all the tools they need to be able to do their work, and provide all the administrative support in a TA capacity. But, we also say, make it best for you. Add what it to it that makes it best for you all. And so, you brought up Philadelphia. One of the things that they were able to do is, they were able to use technology to make it work for them, right? And what they did was created an app, so that violence interrupters were immediately notified of shootings, that data came right from the police department, and it went to them, so that they were immediately readily. In Louisville, we had alerts from our local dispatcher's office, right? And so, when things popped off, instead of finding out on the news, or by word of mouth, we got an alert, right? And that was just support from the city, to give them anything they could. Not a lot of times, those alerts were after, you know, slightly delayed, to make sure the scene was safe, of course. But, the goal was to give them as much information they could have, to be as effective as possible, and get out of jump, and some of that stuff. So, those are the things I talk about, when I talk about, you know, make it best for you all, in terms of. There are some things that maybe a city or jurisdiction have never even done, that somebody may have a good idea on the steering committee, and say, hey, why don't we do this? And then we can hop on a call, or hop on a work session, and kind of talk about, does this work out specifically for Dayton or not, in terms of, you know, hopefully seeing some type of effect. But, CVI has been proven to work all over the country, all over the world, if you're just talking about our model. But, specifically in terms of the country, it's been proven to work. Again, Louisville, right up the road, we're seeing reductions. We're seeing reductions in Philly, seeing reductions in New York. Really, I mean, when implemented correctly, when supported, that's the other tale, when supported, right, and when there's collaboration, right, among the, whether it's the steering committee, or from the community. And I think you all are doing a very great job at it, in terms of staying, helping the community stay informed. Every leg of this I've been on with you all, community's been right here with us the whole time. I've never taken a trip up here for a closed-door meeting. It's always been for, you know, so that the community's informed. And so, I think you all are doing a great job in that.
Okay, yeah. And I think the other thing, too, that I did want to mention, there are some variety of programs that associate, or are connected to, the whole Cure Violence piece that you're working with. For example, in some places like Baltimore, for example, in terms of talking with the mayor there, and some of the other individuals in that space, that job opportunities for some of the individuals whose behavior is changing. For example, if you identify some individuals who are part of a problem in the community, sometimes, and oftentimes, we talk about the fact that sometimes these are survival things, that they find themselves getting caught up into. And if there are job opportunities, housing opportunities, health opportunities, those are the type of things that could lead to causing that person to put themselves in a better space of being a positive contributor, as far as our society is concerned, as opposed to them carrying on some of the ways that they have been engaged in, which are contributing to the problems. Can you talk on that piece for a moment, in terms of what you've seen in those spaces as well?
Yes, sir. It really speaks to the role of the outreach workers, in terms of connecting with a participant or potential individual, and really figuring out what's going on, right? And so, when we bring on a participant, we do what we call an R and R assessment, that is Risk, Needs, and Resilience. That is a monthly assessment that outreach workers conduct in the database, so that program managers, the city steering committee is able to track the progress, as little as one individual, right? And so, what we want to see is, over the course of the time, is that their risks go down, right, their needs go down, but their resilience rises, right? And so, we're able to track those things on a monthly basis. So, I know you asked specifically about things like jobs, but by doing that R and R, we're able to identify whether it's a job, whether it's food insecurity, whether somebody's getting bullied into committing violent acts, or crimes. That R and R is the start of it, right? And so, that's the only way we're going to be able to determine and keep on track how a participant is doing. Once we get that R and R, we're starting to figure out whatever barriers are in that individual's life, whatever's keeping them twisted in this cycle of violence and conflict, then we can look at, does this person need a job? Does this person need this? Does this person need that? The reason we don't start off with, they must need a job, if they're out here conducting violence, is because it may not be safe for them to go to work, right? If you're out there, and you're in too deep, you're not going to show up at Wendy's to go work your shift, and everybody knows where you're at, right? So, we have to do the R and R assessment, and figure out where this person is, where they are in terms of their own conflicts out there, right? Is it something that we can mediate our way out of, whether it's a one-on-one mediation, or a group intervention, mediation? Is it something to where we actually probably need to relocate this individual, because there's just nothing that we can do in order to deal with this right now, or until things cool down? But, it all begins with the R and R assessment, to determine what is it that this person can benefit from, that will keep them from engaging in this cycle of violence?
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the other point, two points, I just want to say again, from just my personal experience, in terms of teaching conflict resolution skills to young people. And having been a teacher for 10 and a half years, okay, seven years in high school, and also coaching, teaching young people conflict resolution skills, as I did with all my classes for my first couple of weeks, in terms of teaching, in each one of these sessions, each one of the semesters, it caused me to be in a very positive position with them, to have one fight in 10 and a half years. And to have young people who are coming to your classroom, feeling safe, feeling engaged, and understanding that not only do they have value, personal value, and personal rights, but other members of the classroom, or that environment, also have rights. And so, understanding there's certain things that you can do, and should do, but you do not have the right to infringe upon someone else's rights. And many times, this is something very basic. Also, just basic conversation, in terms of what is it you did that caused me to be upset? Did you do it on purpose, or did you do it by accident? All those things, and more, go into some of those processes, in terms of how we remove and minimize violence, as far as our community is concerned. So, the last thing I want to say, in terms of financing and support, that I think we're committed to do whatever we need to do. We do know that we do have some investors already, that have committed $25,000 for five years already, anonymous donors who are sending their money to the Dayton Foundation, which will house the resources that we're going to be using to support this program. So, I just wanted to make that announcement, as far as more of us to understand, just how committed, not just we are here, but how committed other members of this committee are as well. So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we finish with our questions and answers. You guys did a tremendous job, and it's been a long time, a lot of questions, and I really appreciate your responses to our questions. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry. I misspoke earlier when I said I didn't have an addition.
Okay.
I have an addition to the calendar.
Okay.
I'd like to request the addition of emergency resolution number 6889-25, appointing an assessment equalization board regarding the proposed assessments for the plan for services adopted by the Downtown Dayton Special Improvement District, Inc., and approved by the city commission, and declaring an emergency. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. So, Ms. Lofton, are there additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I do not have any additions or deletions. However, I would like to highlight items B1 and B2, which are two contracts that total $200,000, half of which is being funded from our Dayton Recovery Plan, and the other half from an urban community forestry grant that we have received. These contracts will allow the city to plant trees in the public right-of-way, in our neighborhoods, at the request of our citizens. The $200,000 will be spent on citizen-requested planting first, and if we have funds available afterwards, then we will also begin to plant in our parks and boulevards. The citizen-requested plantings are for curb-to-sidewalk locations only, in our right-of-way, not in private yards. And the species will depend on available inventory and site placement. That's the, we will have a list of species to choose from. It is currently on our list, and we have already began to contact our community, so that they can begin putting applications forward. For any citizen who is interested in putting a tree in the curb lawn, they can visit the city's website at DaytonOhio.gov, and there is a tree request form there. They can complete the form, provide basic information and comments on the specific request for their location. And then, the city foresters are going to analyze that request, to determine if the species that they want is appropriate for that location, and approve the placement. Once the planting occurs, which will start in mid-October, we are asking all of those citizens who request and receive a tree, to continue watering and taking care of that tree. The city will put a watering bag around it, but we will need the support of that resident or business owner, to ensure the future viability of the tree planted. So, we're excited about the program, and hope that it will continue, and that citizens will take advantage of this. That is all I have, Your Honor.
That's all you have? Okay. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are designed to speak on the city manager's recommendations?
None on the calendar item.
Okay. Commissioners, comments and thoughts on city manager's recommendations?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner-Sloss?
I have none.
None? Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, for the addition, is there a possibility of delaying that for a week, given that came to us yesterday, and I think there's some questions around that?
So, they are on an extremely tight timeline, and so, there is a second reading for the actual ordinance to be passed. And in order for that review committee to be stood up, to do all of the anticipated legwork necessary to communicate with those that will be affected by the assessment, that board does need to be stood up. The majority of the folks The majority of the folks that are being appointed to that board have been on that, have served on that board before, and the board is only basically pulled up and activated once every five years when the assessment is necessary. Christina Scott is in the audience if she would care to come up. I am putting her very much on the spot right now and pulling on some relational liberties here to address that specific issue. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And can you share with the public your role?
I am the vice president for strategy at the downtown Dayton Partnership.
Okay. What's the function of the assessment review board?
The assessment equalization board is an opportunity for the assessment payers, property owners in the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District to ask for their front footage or assessment to be reviewed.
And what is the timeline that we're on?
In the past, there is notice requirements in the Ohio Revised Code. So this timeline is really being driven by the notice requirements in the Ohio Revised Code. We need to send a mailing-out certified mail return receipt, get the return receipt or don't get the return receipt, and then find other legally appropriate ways to notify each CID payer of the opportunity to appeal the assessment. And so in the past, that's taken 10 weeks. We think we can do it in eight weeks. After the assessment equalization board meets, and it's currently calendared for November 21st, there is additional action that the commission will need to take to certify the Special Improvement District renewal before it goes to the county auditor. And of course, the county auditor is preparing property tax assessments, and we're on an early to mid-December timeline with them. The CID is the first special improvement district in the state of Ohio. This, it's been around for 30 years, and we don't anticipate any issues arising, but we also need to make sure that we do everything that's required by Ohio Revised Code for transparency and our taxpayers.
Sure. The ORC, does that have a specified date that all this has to take place, or is what's driving it, the work with the auditor and treasurer's department to get the assessments done on their timeline?
It is about getting the assessments done with the auditor.
Okay.
So the ORC, you need a certain amount of time to do what's legally required by the ORC, and in discussions with the auditor's office, we are clear on what their deadline is.
Sure.
And so we're trying to work backwards from the auditor and treasurer's timeline.
Sure. And who does the appointment? Is this a city management appointment to this assessment board, or is it the commission's?
You all are making the appointment. The recommendations of who sits on that board are done by the city manager.
Okay. And how often do we do this?
Every five years.
So we knew this was coming?
We knew this was coming, yes.
So why are we on such?
Part of it is the, again, the members that have served before were contacted again to determine whether or not they could serve, and there were two that were not able to because they won't be in the city during that time. So we had to go through the process of trying to identify those who had the capability and the experience to also serve on the board.
But we knew this is coming for five years, so it seems like our deadline should have been six weeks ago. We should have been at this point six weeks ago so we could have had some deliberation on this.
Commissioner Fairchild, I'm going to ask for your grace. This is the first time I've done this. We did have our whole staff turned around for the NATO Parliamentary Assembly, and so we've been trying to do two things at once, as Travis Kelsey would say, and it has pushed our timeline beyond what I'm personally comfortable with. And so I understand your desire for deliberation. I am also very stressed about getting this done and getting this assessment done that funds or organization, that funds the ambassadors in the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District, getting this on tax bills for the fall. And so I'm asking for your grace.
Sure.
This is not the way I like to operate.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you for acknowledging that. I appreciate that. No, my concern is when, it seems, and let me make sure I'm clear, because I may have a false assumption. The assessment should be some kind of independent, objective review, so if a property owner feels like they're assessed unfairly, that they'll get a fair hearing.
Correct. It's really incorrectly. If any of the math that we have done to calculate the assessment, which is based on 25% of their front footage, as defined in the Ohio Revised Code, and 75% of the auditor's valuation on the property, if they believe that is incorrect, that they have a chance for a hearing. My understanding is that folks who serve on the assessment equalization board are traditionally retired city employees who are familiar with the process, with these kinds of processes, and it's intended to be a neutral, uninterested hearing.
Okay. Thank you. This has been really helpful. I'm glad that you could come in short notice. I'm sorry that the timeline, you know, we got this at 5:00 yesterday.
Understood.
And just want to make sure we're making the best decision.
I absolutely appreciate you asking questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shaw?
Yeah, well, just quickly, just to that, I am on, represent this body on the CID board, and I appreciate the great work that they have done and will continue to do. I do give you grace in this space, and this very important work. I'm confident that that staff, both our staff and the DDP staff, is appropriately situated to do this work. So I'm prepared to move forward on it, and that's all I have on the city manager's recommendations.
Okay. Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a mention, we talked about the form on daytonohio.gov for a tree request that'll go in the tree lawn, that's the area between the street and sidewalk. There is also an ongoing program at the land bank where you can get a tree in your yard, and I think most of the city, if not all the city, is eligible. So if you want a tree between the sidewalk and the road, that first part there, go to daytonohio.gov, talk to the city. If you want a tree somewhere else in your yard, go to mclandbank.com, and they have a tree equity reforestation program that will be able to take care of you. My immediate next-door neighbor is part of that program right now, and she's very happy with it. So I encourage everyone to take part. It's time to try to reforest the city, cool things down, make our neighborhoods look better. There are a lot of benefits. So thank you, Mayor, for.
Good. Good. We're good. So Mayor, have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations.
I move to approve the city manager's recommendation.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Okay, so you've probably moved and seconded to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading, emergency resolution number 6888-25, declaring the necessity to implement the plan for services adopted by the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District, Inc., and approved by the city commission and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of resolution number 6888-25.
Second.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to have resolution number 688825, declare the emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
Second reading, emergency resolution number 6888-25, declaring the necessity to implement the plan for services adopted by the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District, Inc., and approved by the city commission. Mayor MEMS?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32159-25, amending the city's appropriations for the year 2025. Mayor MEMS?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading ordinance number 32160-25, amending the official zoning map to establish Plan Development 193 and change the underlying zoning from eclectic, single-family residential ER4 and OS park slash open space to eclectic, multifamily EMF for 8.79 acres at 20 South Wright Avenue. Mayor MEMS?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Second reading resolution number 6887-25, authorizing the necessary tax levies, requesting the advance payment by Montgomery County, Ohio, to the city of Dayton, Ohio, of tax monies collected for 2026, certifying the same to the county auditor. Mayor MEMS?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
Informal resolution number 1015-25, endorsing the human services issue on November 4th, 2025, general election ballot to continue critical human services for residents of Dayton and Montgomery County.
Your Honor, I move for immediate passage of informal resolution number 1015-25. Second, Your Honor.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to pass an emergency resolution number 1015-25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
And for the item that was added, first reading, emergency resolution number 6889-25, appointing an assessment equalization board regarding the proposed assessments for the plan for services adopted by the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District, Inc., and approved by the city commission and declaring an emergency.
Having been declared an emergency, I move for the immediate passage of resolution number 6889-25.
Second.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to have resolution number 68889-25, declare the emergency. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I need to abstain, Your Honor.
Okay.
Thank you.
The record show that Commissioner Joseph abstained.
Appointing, second reading, emergency resolution number 6889-25, appointing an assessment equalization board regarding the proposed assessments for the plan for services adopted by the downtown Dayton Special Improvement District, Inc., and approved by the city commission. Mayor MEMS?
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph?
I abstain.
Shaw?
Aye.
Fairchild?
Aye.
Turner-Sloss?
Aye.
That concludes the legislation, Your Honor.
Okay, we have some vote appointments. Yes, sir. First?
Your Honor, I move to appoint Uriah Langmire to the Sister Cities Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2028.
Second, Your Honor.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to appoint Uriah Langmire to the Sister Cities Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2028. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Mayor, I apologize in advance for the pronunciation of one of these names.
Okay, all right.
I move to appoint.
Do the best you can, and I'll do the best I can.
All right. I move to appoint Teresa Troyer and Sanya Maranova to the Welcome Dayton Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to appoint Teresa Troyer and Kaseena Maranova to the Welcome Dayton Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2028. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right.
Your Honor, I move to appoint Monica Jones to the preschool promise board for a term ending December 31st, 2027.
Second motion, Your Honor.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to appoint Monica Jones to the preschool promise board for a term ending December 31st, 2027. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Your Honor, I move to concur with the acceptance of the appointment of Mr. Max McConnell to the Miami Township Dayton Joint Economic Development District Board to represent persons working within the JED for a term ending September 8th, 2029.
Second, Your Honor.
Yes, we've probably moved and seconded to concur with the acceptance of the appointment of Mr. Max McConnell to the Miami Township Dayton Joint Economic Development District called JED, a board for a term, or for persons working with JED for a term ending September 8th, 2029. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. Your comments from citizens. Ms. Blackshear, we have any comments or citizens registered to speak?
Two citizens have registered. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on, you will have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience and attendants, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand-clapping, finger-snapping, and conversations that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Reynard Despain.
Reynard Despain, and I live at 152 McClure Street here in Dayton.
You may begin.
Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time here this morning. You'll have to excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous. It's only my second time in City Hall. I want to compliment you on the wonderful staff you have here, the friendliness and dignity that I received from the security folks downstairs. When you're willing to look ambiguous of any kind in public, friendliness and dignity don't always come in spades. It's kind of funny that a community as proportionally tiny as the transgender community has been put into such a political spotlight. The scientific and medical ethics communities have been regulating themselves just fine for many decades with minimal intervention from legislators who were themselves entirely unqualified to practice medicine or make decisions for a patient. And yet, when my provider prescribes me the same medications that are also prescribed to cisgender patients, legislators nationwide are suddenly up in arms, medical advocates for children who are practicing without a license. It's difficult to have your voice heard over the deluge of powerful ones trying to speak on your behalf. In the news, I see the president's son saying this. Hopefully this works.
100% right, Megan. Think about per capita. I can't name, including probably like Al Qaeda and the Taliban, a group that is more violent per capita than the radical trans movement.
I see the Department of Justice proposing gun bans for transgender citizens, stripping my community of our Second Amendment rights on the basis of our sex, our gender, and our presentation. I helped draft the proposal for Athens, Ohio's Safe Haven Resolution, and I would be extremely grateful to the city of Dayton, the city I call my home, if you pass the Safe Haven Resolution as well. It would be a promise from the city of Dayton to the transgender community that our voices have your ear more than those who other and villainize us, those who slander us as violent, as groomers, as mentally ill, as pests, and as more transgender than human. All we ask is that you listen to us and to the medical and scientific communities who have proven empirically that, just like any medical treatment, for those who need it, gender transition can save lives. It saved mine. I wouldn't be here without it. You've heard a lot of voices this morning, and you'll hear a lot more once you leave. I just hope that my voice, that the voices of my community linger in your ear and affect your choices. Thank you very much for your time, and have a wonderful day.
Okay. Thank you. Have a great day.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Maddie. I live in Dayton, Ohio.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Maddie. I'm a resident of Dayton. To nobody's surprise, the activists attempting to break Israel's illegal blockade and deliver aid to Gaza were attacked in international waters by the Israeli offensive forces. Two weeks from now, we will have watched for two whole years as the illegitimate state has, with our tax dollars, flattened Gaza to a parking lot. Our taxes and our government's permission have funded this genocide, and Dayton Region Israeli Trade Alliance is here to ensure the Daytonians are extra complicit with our taxes going towards strengthening ties between the two regions. And yet, our mayor and council members' response, no comment. No comment on the starving men, women, and children, no comment. No comment on taking away our ability to individually stop funding blatant ethnic cleansing. No comment on why they won't do the bare minimum of dumping Drida and divesting our city from the settler colonial terrorist group. I'll leave you with this. First, they came for Gaza. Our local officials did nothing, as it was not in their financial interests. Next, they came for immigrants. Our local officials welcomed ICE into the city to destroy families. Next, they will come for the homegrows, and we will have no faith left in our local officials to protect those who elected them into power. Do what's right, the common sense move, and dump Drida. Stop funneling Daytonian money and resources into a US-funded genocide. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
That concludes citizens' comments, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lofton, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners, closing comments?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Turner Sloss?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank Ms. Gudoff for her presentation and the support of Issue One. Thank you, Commissioner Shaw, for your work on this initiative. This is great work, well overdue, in terms of like where we need to be in providing those vital services and continuing on that path. So again, I appreciate my colleagues and our ability to move forward with the legislation and the $58 million that will go back into providing those vital services. Ms. Hockenbrock, thank you very much for being here this morning, for your presentation, along with Mr. Q, and I hope the family's doing well. Thank you for making that trip up to Dayton. I know you made a number of trips, and we really appreciate your leadership. And thank you for going into such detail with the presentation this morning, and just allowing us that grace and courtesy and respect with the line of questions that we have. As mentioned, this is important to all of us, to our community, to our city administration, and so just making sure that we are addressing those concerns as eloquently as you did and being very patient, it means a lot, and we really do appreciate you, as well as your entire staff back in Louisville. Ms. Jackson, you did a wonderful job. Thank you very much for vetting the questions early on and just making sure that the information was readily available to us and providing, and going the extra mile and providing that additional information to us. So I hope we can continue on that path. As mentioned, this is very important to all of us, and we look forward for those details as we move out of the performance reports, and once the contract itself is finalized and signed, and look forward to that Teams link on the 29th, which is Monday, and just finding some way and some means for us to make sure that all five of us, I'm not willing to give up my seat, not yet, but if I can find a way, and it means maybe it is that I sit in the first 30 minutes and then pass it on to my colleagues, so that they can in fact attend, or whatever the case may be, we can work those details out and seeing that there's some level of flexibility in our schedules, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. And I also would like to thank Ms. Smith from West Care, East End Community Services, Will Smith from DPS, as well as Nicole Miller with Miami Valley Urbanly for being here this morning. Thank you, Ms. Henderson for being here, Lisa Henderson. I know she's a part of the Godaha staff, and she does the assessment every three years. And Ms. Lofton, I apologize, I did not catch the representative from DDP Downtown Dayton Partnership?
Christina Scott.
Ms. Christina Scott. We'd like to also extend gratitude and appreciation, excuse me, to Ms. Christina Scott in providing that information. And thank you, Commissioner, for your question. I really appreciate you bringing that to attention and extending that grace. Would like to thank Despain, thank you for being here, and thank you for your leadership and your work that you're doing in drafting the legislation for Athens. And we are reviewing that language, as mentioned, Commissioner, all of us, but more so in particular, Commissioner Fairchild, Commissioner Joseph and I. We have had conversations with our law department in identifying and seeing what, if in fact there are some gaps in our legislation, and making those comparisons as to what we can do to advance, to make sure we have that in place. I would also like to thank Maddie H. Thank you for being here this morning, and thank you for raising your comments. Just a couple of things that I wanted to mention, that we actually have been very voiceful and very bold in our position in terms of making sure that we are in fact upholding true to our sister cities, and we passed a legislation, a resolution actually, on December 20th of 2023, informal resolution of number 1008-23, and that was in fact a resolution for the ceasefire. We've also, just wanted to bring to your attention as well, also funding for Drida, that contract is no longer operative, or operating, if you will, has been terminated, so is no longer existing. And then I would like to acknowledge, there were a number, as always, there's always something going on in the city of Dayton every weekend. So, the famous Belmont Day was this past Saturday, very successful event, and the wonderful band of Belmont High School, they did an excellent job. They kicked off the ceremony, and it was just a very festive, and the weather was great. It actually turned out to be pretty hot. But Belmont Day is another successful year, and would like to acknowledge all of the leadership and all of the committees that go along. Ms. Judy Orick and her leadership and all of her tireless efforts in making sure that that event kicks off without any delays, whatever have you. And then Auditor Carl Keefe served as the emcee. So again, it was a joyous occasion, and a number of people showed out and came out for Belmont Days this past weekend. Then the Sister Sister Conference took place with Dr. Karen Towson, another successful event. There probably were about 100, 150, maybe even 200 women there, a very uplifting and encouraging and powerful event. And just wanted to note that the theme this year, this is, I believe, the 32nd year, and so Dr. Karen Towson's been leading this conference for a number of years, very moving, and the slogan was this year, "I've Got The Power." So again, I encourage people to make sure that they look out for it the next year. And what else took place this weekend? Omega's Block Party was this weekend, again, just a host of events, as well as the 35th Dayton Fellowship Club anniversary. So, host of events.
Good.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner, for that and for recognizing those who've come. I want to say to Q and to Ms. Jackson and Sarah. Hockenbrock, I don't think I said this. I hope you could tell by the depth of my questions and my concern and my interest that I think this is really critical, and I want to make sure we get it right, and I want to thank you for your work. I didn't do that in my comments, I was just so focused on making sure that we're going to get this right, and, you know, this is life and death, and we're going to save lives. And so, thank you for that work. Really appreciate it. Likewise, Chief Henderson, I didn't, thank you for the work with Dayton Police Department and working so cooperatively with our partners. That is really, it was good to hear Q that you affirmed that, but we would expect no less from our police department and your leadership, so thank you. Mayor, I was curious if, given the court ruling to allow our students to transfer at the hub now, I think this is an opportunity for our peace ambassadors. So could we identify some people who are on those buses, who are going to be down there in that hub, who could be trained, given some of the positive reports we've already got out there? I know we don't have the full report, but it appears that there's an opportunity for us to put the peace ambassadors, you know, identify people on the buses who could be peace ambassadors, and then also thinking about how we might extend that into the library, both the main branch and the Belmont branch, so that we can have those assets available, not only for our students, but also for the general public.
Good question, Commissioner. I think that flows through the Dayton Board of Education and the president of that group. They are constantly working on issues to try to resolve this, and they will give us an update at their earliest convenience. Right now, I do not have the information about exactly what they're going to do. I do have the, some preliminary information about the fact that they're trying to limit the scope of the bus passes, they go back to that space, to move to have young people who are participating in sports to be the only ones, or other extracurricular activities, such as work, to be the only ones who will have those unlimited passes, and then for the other young people to have passes that are limited in terms of the scope and time during the course of the day. But again, that's their decision. They're working on that, and they will give a report to the community, I'm sure, as soon as they worked it out.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Scott, thank you for coming on such short notice. We really value the work of Dayton Downtown Partnership. We would never want to be an impediment to that, and certainly want to be a full-throated supporter of it. So thank you for coming and helping us move this forward together. Did want to mention tomorrow, the Food Bank is having a distribution down at the University of Dayton. You can start, oh, Commissioner Joseph, you got it? Okay, well then I'll let you do that. And then the last thing I had, oh, I want to thank Ms. Conley, government teacher at Dunbar High School. She allowed me to come in and speak to her government class yesterday, and the students had some really great questions, it was a really good conversation throughout the whole class time, so I was glad to get the invitation and for the students and their engagement. And if you're a theater buff, Stivers does this really great project. It's called the 24-Hour Theater. And so, the students in the theater department on Thursday will get a guidance on what their scene has to be about, and one line that they have to include. And then they have free rein to create the scene, write it, come up with a dialogue, stage it, rehearse it, and then produce it on Saturday at, starting at 6 o'clock. So, if you like theater and want to see young people really working to hone their skills, I invite you to come out to Stivers at 6 o'clock on Saturday.
Okay, you good?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Shaw?
All right, very quickly, the Montgomery County Work Force Development Department is hosting a job fair tomorrow. That's Thursday, the 25th, from 12 to 4 at the Convention Center. Job seekers can access onsite interviews and resume assistance, and you can register at thejobcenter.org. Also, I don't know if someone else has this in their notes already, but I'm excited to, in about five minutes, go to the 2025 Walk of Fame celebration honoring some very impressive members of this community.
You got it. Okay, Commissioner Joseph?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for giving a little preview. Tomorrow, the Food Bank, in partnership with Care Source, is hosting its largest food distribution event of the year. Actually, tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow from 10 to noon at UD Arena. It's a mass food distribution, open to anyone, no appointment necessary, just come in your car, you don't even have to get out of your car, you just pull through and people put food in your car. It's wonderful. There's all kinds of fresh produce, shelf-stable goods, other essential groceries. It's a wonderful thing, and we want to thank both the Food Bank and Care Source for doing this for our folks. And also, I want to thank our Welcome Dayton organization. Last week was welcoming week. As always, we try to be welcoming to our immigrants and refugees. There were a number of programs. I want to thank our community partners and our Welcome Dayton organization for all the work they put in getting it done. Thank you.
Okay. See, I was hoping you guys would cover some of the other things I had on my list, so I wouldn't have to have a long list, but...
How do we do?
Not well. Okay. So, back to basics, team program. So, we're working this at one of our recreation centers, Lower Side Recreation Center, October 25th through the 30th. And that will include teaching more and more of our young people essential basic skills that they need to navigate through everyday life. Also, money management, as well as just how to budget your time wisely, how to write a resume, and how to sharpen your interview skills, something that we do, again, with our city and city department leaders, if you will, throughout our summer programs as well. So this is a very concentrated program, again, for the days I mentioned, through ages 13 through 17. So again, thanks to city manager, city staff, for working on making those things happen for our young people. Additionally, in the job market, October 3rd, Manufacturing Day at Sinclair University, primarily focusing on many of the young people in surrounding school districts to Dayton. And it comes at a great time, because we keep increasing the number of jobs as far as our community is concerned, and having more and more of our young people prepared to take those jobs. As we talked about peace earlier, this past Saturday, the Expressions of Peace Organization presented a very intensive all-day program, where we had some of our young peace ambassadors who were participating in that program as well. And then the Omega Peace Parade, this past, I think it was Thursday, these days sort of run together. Again, a great opportunity for more and more of our young people to march in the parade to talk about peace and all the expressions of peace that we need to move this city forward in a peaceful manner. Many of the ministers who were also there who were speaking, because as we talk about peace, I know Q talked about some of the elements involved in that, we also find, especially in urban communities, that trauma is a major, major contributor to some of the violent situations that we have in our city. And so, I'm very happy to continuously include all the ministers who are involved in helping us throughout this whole process dealing with peace. And on Friday, we have the Fourth Annual Youth Team Summit. This year, they will house their program at the Downtown Dayton Library, start at 9:00 a.m. And our feature keynote speaker this year will be the former basketball pro of the championship with the Miami Heat, Norris Cole, Dunbar graduate as well. And so, he will be sharing some good thoughts to our young people about how to be successful, and just some of the kinds of things that are involved in being a successful athlete, as well as a successful person. And then, probably finally, the on-main groundbreaking this Friday, I think it starts at like 10 o'clock in the morning. And I just want to mention, that's another 2,000 jobs coming to this community with another 800, not 800, I wish 800, $80 million investment in terms of this community. And if I can get them to move that decimal point over to 800 million, I'd be happy, but I'm going to take 80 million as well, as another contribution to this community. So again, love and peace for all, and hatred for none. With no further business to come before this commission, this meeting is adjourned. It's been a long one, but it's been a good one. Thank all of you for being here.